The meeting of the -- excuse me, I can't talk. The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now being called to order. We will have an emocation by Councilman James Green and Councilman James Flurry will lead us with the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand please?
Thank you God for this day. Thank you for another opportunity to take care of the business of this city and we actually need you to come be with us and help us to make the right decisions and we just ask you to cover us and thank you for what you've done and we're going to praise you in advance for what you're going to do. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a row please?
Councilman Flurry. Councilwoman Foote. Councilman Nicholson.
President.
Councilman Butcher.
Go Tigers.
Councilman Flurry.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilman Butcher.
Here. Tomorrow we entertain a motion for the minutes from the special meeting that was held on December 16th and the administrative conference that was held on Thursday, December 19th. Does any council member have any awards or recognitions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I see Scott Martinez in the audience. Just want to welcome him and his assistant. Is there anything you'd like to say today, Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, I'll just make a few comments. First of all, I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday and look forward to starting the new year. Mr. Councilman Flurry, I know we have Tomez Palas before you today. I guess that's on the agenda. But we're starting the new year off with launching of a new strategic plan. We'll be going over some funding, things that we'll have to address as an organization over the next five years. As many of y'all know, most of our funding comes from the private sector. You look at all collectively, all the funding we get from every public body in North Louisiana constitutes about 13% of our budget. So it's important that we have the capital we need to meet our mission so we can continue to try to foster job creation and capital investment in the communities we serve. Also, you know, I think that this is going to be a good year when I'm looking at some of the economic development indicators and the activity that we ended last year with. I'm very optimistic about some things that are happening that this city is part of. I know there's an announcement Thursday and we have some other things with local industry expansions that will happen this first quarter. So things I think are going to be very positive for the city of Shreveport as we move into 2020 and I expect a very positive year from an economic development perspective. And again, I thank y'all for y'all's support of our group, not only, you know, with your financial support, but also the support and the leadership that y'all provide in this community and the time y'all take away from your families. So, thank you.
Councilman Flurry?
The panel not letting up so I could point to questions to speak, so I raise my hand. Thank you for acknowledging me, Mr. Chairman. Scott, I just want to say, I kind of thought maybe I would sing, but I just want to say, happy birthday.
Thank you. I know I don't look 49, but this is the last year of my 40s and I'm just now getting to middle age, so.
Well, I'm certainly glad that you were able to celebrate a birthday. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Martinez. Ms. Basada, how you doing?
Councilman.
I was going to ask, I guess not. Maybe not. Ms. Jones, anything from administration?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay. I know that we did, we do have, do we have some members in the audience who are up for appointments or anything today?
Yes, sir. I have one.
Want to call them up now? Would that be good?
If that's okay.
Okay.
I'll defer to you guys. Okay. Ms. Scott, can you come forward, please?
Members of council, I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Thea Scott. She is on for confirmation as an Assistant City Attorney, working here at Government Plaza. I believe her resume was distributed to you all. As you know, Danielle has moved on to bigger and better things, i.e. City Council. And so while finding a replacement for her is quite the task, I believe Ms. Scott would certainly be the one up for it. One of the assignments that I would plan to assign her to would be to facilitate and represent counsel. She has a great background. She has diverse experience in civil, criminal. She's done some public policy. She's done some transactional. She's done a lot in six years and so I'd ask that you ask whatever questions you may and then strongly ask you to consider her for confirmation.
I'm sorry. Councilman.
Hey, Ms. Scott, welcome.
Welcome.
I understand it's not the reason you're here, but you have a little bit of family lineage in city government.
I do.
In Shreveport, so tell your mother hello.
I will do that.
For all of us, please. Tell us a little bit about your background, what you've done since you finished law school.
Okay. Again, my name is Thea R. Scott. I was raised here in Shreveport, graduate of C.E. Bird High School, class of 2004. Went on to attend Louisiana State University in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Graduated from there in 2008. Ultimately obtained my law degree from Southern University Law Center in Baton Rouge. Went on to practice at firms in both the New Orleans and the Baton Rouge areas. Some focused on criminal defense work, but primarily in the area of general civil litigation. Decided that Shreveport was, Shreveport has always been home. Made the decision to relocate and since returning, I've maintained a private practice as well as simultaneously working as a contract attorney for my previous law firm in Baton Rouge.
Welcome and I'm very pleased you decided to join our staff.
Thank you.
So then, Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Scott, how are you?
I'm good.
I'm sorry, I missed the introduction. Was, who are your relatives that are associated?
Terry Scott is my mother.
That's your mother?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
For the record, that is not why she was.
No, no, no. No, when Councilman Nicholson acknowledged her associations, I didn't get the, I didn't get the name. But anyway, my understanding and I apologize for not being up to speed. I was telling anybody who would listen that over the last 12 days, I've driven over 3,000 miles back and forth to Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Yes, sir.
Because of a situation. But anyway, what is your city municipal background?
It's limited at the time, but I mean, I've had, I've had experience in Baton Rouge dealing with municipal entities, city ordinances, that sort of thing.
Okay. Are you, for me, what the attorney have asked you to be responsible for?
Yes, sir, I am. She's currently bringing me up to speed. I've gotten up to speed on my own and I think I'm more than, more than welcoming the challenge.
Okay. All right, well, certainly I appreciate you offering yourself to come to the city. We need people to come home and we need people to offer themselves who have the qualifications, the competence to do the work. I'm sure you have that. So thank you for.
Yes, sir, I'm excited to get started.
Great, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Councilman Bradford. Councilman Green?
I'd just like to say welcome and tell your mama I said hello.
I will do that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Scott, I guess I'll add in just to say, look at your resume, I think it's great. I think Ms. Crell did a great job in selecting you also and of course, as she said off the record, make sure you tell your mother I said hello.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there someone else you have?
We do. We have Ben Abir, who is for confirmation for Controller for the Finance Department and he is here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And it's for, what is it for, for Controller, right?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Councilman Flurry?
Mr. Abir, I want to say on behalf of me and my associates in District E that we certainly appreciate you taking, agreeing to accept this position of Controller. I know what outstanding work you do and we are very fortunate that you would agree to accept it. We wish you nothing but the best and we stand here to support you any way we can. Again, thank you for accepting.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilman Bradford?
Certainly, I mean, your presence in this building has been very aware and positive and appreciated. But I would like for you to know, with your experience and knowledge of what has been transpiring, what do you, what do you see as some of our primary challenges in you assuming this position?
In assuming this position?
Yes, sir.
Bringing that department together and bringing it back up to a level that the city deserves, seeing to it that we stay on top of the things that we are supposed to be on top of. I would like to see that department come together as a team so that we all work for a common goal and that goal is to effectively take care of the city's accounting and finance business.
And I appreciate that answer, but at the same time, if we was to just anticipate how that would come to pass, do you have in mind how you would initiate the various moves that would get us where you would like to see us at?
I have started to put together some things. First of all, I want to be sure that we're on top of all of our payroll activities, particularly our payroll taxes. We have some upcoming things, GASP pronouncements that we have to put into place during this year that are effective for this 2020 year. Will be part of our audit at the begin, at the end of this year and I certainly am looking forward to sitting down with the CRI people and making sure that we respond appropriately to what they need for completing their audit work.
Well, again, once again, I feel very confident in your ability to do and bring us to where we would all like for us to be. Unfortunately, that there were some, some areas that we was not pleased with and the way our finances was going, but your presence now, I think, will give us more confidence that we can get there. I appreciate you coming and offering yourself for this position.
I promise you, I will do my very best.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Bradford. Vice Chair Nicholson.
Mr. Abir, like Councilman Flurry and Councilman Bradford, I'm very appreciative that you are willing to accept the position of Controller. As you know, this has been a very challenging period for the city's Finance Department. You've alluded to some of these problems in your remarks, but as we all know, the external auditors report for 2018 disclosed what I've characterized here and elsewhere as systemic failures of the Finance Department to fulfill its function. I know you are committed to addressing those failures. I certainly hope that we never again receive an external auditor's report or any other report indicating we failed to do things like file payroll tax forms on time, pay taxes on time, and meet other basic financial obligations that the city has to its citizens. I also hope that you will focus along with the Chief Administrative Officer, Ms. Jones, on ensuring that we have developed and implemented appropriate written policies and procedures for all the things that the employees of the Finance Department need to do for the city of Shreveport. It was concerning and surprising, I think, everybody up here to receive a report indicating that we didn't have written policies and procedures for basically anything so far as the external auditor could ascertain. So thank you for all the good work you've done at internal audit for a number of years for the city. Thank you for being willing to accept what I anticipate will be a very challenging assignment and know that in my capacity as a member of the council, I'm committed to providing you whatever support you need to discharge your obligations to the city.
Thank you, sir.
Well, just real quick, Mr. Abir, thank you. I appreciate you accepting this position by the mayor. I think that you're a natural fit. In the last year, I know that you have been on the Audit and Finance Committee, I know that you've participated in several audits that Vice Chair Nicholson was talking about and, and the chairman of the, Mr. Flurry talked about. So I think that you have a very good insight to what we need to do and I'm hoping with your experience that, that you know the problems, that you can implement some things very quickly to make sure we aren't in a position. I just can't imagine us being late on payroll taxes and things like that. So I hope that as soon as you get into that position, if you're not already, you know, planning some things, we won't have to worry about that this year.
I plan for you to not worry.
Good, good. Makes me feel better.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you so much for your willingness to serve. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Jones?
I believe there are others. Is there anyone here present for confirmation for the Human Relations Commission? If you can come up, please.
My name is Sherri Kerr and I'm up for the Human Relations Commission.
All right, Ms. Kerr. Any council member have any, state the address of your, can you state your address, please? I'm sorry. Your address.
Oh, 2745 Fairfield Avenue.
Ms. Kerr, will you remind the council of the responsibilities of the Human Relations Commission, what it does?
What are my qualifications?
No, ma'am, well, I'd be happy to hear those, but remind us what the Human Relations Commission does.
Well, mostly we are there to provide a place where people can bring their issues and give advice mostly though to mediate the issues and, and help resolve them.
And what is your background, ma'am?
I went to Fair Park High School and LSU. I got my doctorate from UCLA and returned back to Shreveport about 15 years ago. And I've had quite a bit of experience in working with diverse communities, both in Los Angeles and New York City, and am very happy to be here in Shreveport.
Thank you, ma'am.
Answer what I needed. Did anyone else have any other questions? Councilman Flurry?
I'd say thank you for willing to serve and just wanted to acknowledge Councilman Bradford served on the very first Human Relations in 1942. And he has very much pushed for this to be organized, so thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, Councilman Bradford?
Ms. Kerr?
Ms. Kerr, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilman Flurry actually misspoke. It wasn't 1942. It was 1992.
I'm sorry. You know, my mind slipped, man. I'm sorry.
And I was, after, after the 1991, well, actually, it started in the 80s with the Biracial Commission, then it moved into a situation where Mayor John Hussey put together a committee to look at race relations in Shreveport. And it was, the real meat of what happened was the 1991 gubernatorial race where David Duke came within points of elect, being elected governor. And he carried North Louisiana to the extent that he created some anxieties within the community and their hazelbeard, who was elected in 1990, initiated the first greater Shreveport Human Relations Commission, which grew into a very vital entity in forging better race relations in Shreveport. That commission went for a little over 10 years and it was dissolved under the High Tower Administration and I thought it was a mistake to dissolve it. But anyway, I'm aware of the new Human Race Commission that was, that was re, sort of repurposed in the way, in the way it was to carry out its, its task. You've been on it for three years. What's your, what's your opinion of how it's being effective or ineffective in carrying out the objectives of this new commission? I know it's more, it's more about receiving, I want to say complaints and other feedback from various entities, including gay and lesbians to, to sort of moderate, reminisce to some of the issues that are forthcoming. Are you, are you, have you been a part of any of those?
Yeah, I think our, our major challenge, we have a very caring, strong, experienced committee.
Okay.
And so I'm, I'm very confident of this committee and the research that's being done. What our challenge is, is really getting the word out that we exist.
Okay.
So that people know what we do. So that's something that we're really going to work on this, this time, is to let people know they do have a commission that they can come to.
Good.
Because we don't get that many people coming to us right now.
Yeah, I, I seek that that was the case.
I mean, the New Orleans Commission, you know, there's a lot more. They've expanded, they do a lot more, they see a lot more people. So we sort of look to them and, and are hoping that we can be, have, play a bigger part.
Do you see, now, the mayor has initiated a, a new commission as Commissioner Race. Advocates are now applying to be a part of that commission. It would, it would be more specific in dealing with race relations, more so than the Human Relations Commission. Do you see, do you see the Human Relations Commission playing a role in forging better race relations in Shreveport?
I do, yes. We would like to play a bigger part.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So I said that because I want, I really want to reach out to you and on a personal note, I, I see, and again, I was a part of the first Human Relations Commission, was part of the Biracial Commission, but, and that was 30 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And I see race relations worse now than they were 30 years ago. I really do. And, and I think if we don't come together and be very proactive and very progressive in forging better race relations, I could see this city falling into a, a city that everybody have heard of, that, that would put us on a path of almost disaster if we don't, if we don't do things to, to make, make this city better.
Well, I would really like to talk to you more about this.
Okay, and we can do that, but I, but I wanted to reach out to the commission to, to look at how the new commission, Commissioner Race and the, and the Shreveport Human Relations Commission could work together and do some of the things that, and I have the whole playbook on the first Human Relations Commission that, that we had a executive director, we had a youth council, we had all the entities that, that I thought was, would have maintained Shreveport in a very positive light. So I want to share those and I would set up, I mean, who's the president of that commission?
Adrian Critcher.
Critcher is?
Yes.
Okay. And I found out when y'all, when y'all meeting and I would, I would ask that she allow me to come and make a presentation to the commission and with any other council member that wanted to join me, I would appreciate that as well.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for your, your commitment to doing great things for Shreveport.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right. Councilman Green, I'm sorry, Ms. Kerr.
Ms. Kerr. I'm sorry.
We want you to get some exercise.
I just want to ask, is there anything on the horizon with your committee to basically one day have a setting whereas we do real talk about racism? Because most situations we cover it, but just to have real talk as to the basic issues about how racism could be covered, but to just bring it out in the open and just have some real, real talk conversations about racism?
We need to see if that's within our, you know, within our.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know. If it's not in you all's deal then maybe.
Yeah, we need to explore that and we've been talking about that, to see really, truly if that's within our jurisdiction to actually spearhead some of those things. Because we're qualified to do that and we would like to. And I think that that will be on our next, our next agenda meeting topic.
Well, if, you know, I'd like to be a part of that, if, you know, if you all are open to basically just have a conversation, real talk. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Miss Dan. Thank you. Ms. Jones, anyone else?
Do we have anyone else here for the Human Relation Commission? Anyone here for the Historical Preservation Commission? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Richard Hunter, who is here for Senior Risk Manager, is not here today, so would like to ask the council to postpone and then we can revisit his appointment at the next meeting.
Okay.
Is there anyone here for the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority Board? Okay, I think that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And is Mr.? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. We have a few that are under the clerk's report, so if you all would like to consider those now. We do have Gary Norman here.
That's fine with me.
Director of Finance, Gary Norman.
Director of Public Works.
Director of Public Works.
Public Works.
Good afternoon. Mr. Norman, how you doing?
I'm doing great.
Good. Now, does this, does this have to, can we vote on this today or does it have to wait over? It has to wait?
Nobody's, I mean, you could, very often you will interview the appointees.
All right. So we have.
But that's up to the council.
No, that's, that's fine, okay.
I didn't hear.
We have, we can, we can interview him, but it has to lay over.
It don't have to lay over. We suspend the rules tomorrow, we can.
Well, I mean, not today is what I'm saying.
Not today.
Not today.
But tomorrow you can suspend the rules.
And confirm it.
Okay.
Well, I, I can go first. I, I think I interview Mr. Norman almost every day, every other day if not. So I just want to say I appreciate you and your patience and your knowledge and your willingness to help me understand some of the things that I probably didn't understand that you're working through with me and having the patience to do that, so I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, sir.
I'll just comment, Mr. Chairman, that as we all know, Mr. Norman is smart and professional, effective, very well qualified for the position for which he's been nominated. I'd be delighted to vote to confirm him.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Councilman Butcher?
Mr. Norman, thank you. I've never, this is my first time to serve on the city council, so I've never worked with another Director of Public Works, but, but you have been extremely receptive to anything and you have walked me through a lot of things that I may not have understood. So I, I'm excited for your appointment, making this permanent. I think you deserve it and I will be making a motion tomorrow to suspend the rules and go ahead and do it and let's move on. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Green?
How you, Councilman, were you, you hanging up?
Okay, I'm sorry.
How are you, too? Go ahead.
I just want to say you've always, you've been a longtime city employee. You left us for a while, but you came back and you agreed to step up and help out when the board came there and I just want to say thank you and look forward to working with you. Your, your excellent work is just unbelievable, thorough, and so I look for great things for you.
Well, thank you, sir.
Now, I'll yield back to Honorable James Edward Green.
Thank you. Gary, they said we're going to suspend the rules tomorrow and confirm. The thousand things that I've asked you to do, have you completed all of them?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Gary. I mean, you've, you've been a jewel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, whereas some of you may not have worked with Gary in the past, or knew him, I think I've been knowing him for over 10 years and we've became familiar with each other and I could say unequivocally that I'm proud that now he's being recommended and will be confirmed as the Director of Public Works. I think his, his department has been a bright spot in a, in some spots that have not been so bright over the last few years. And I know that where you are with, as relates to your awareness of what needs to happen to even make this city, city in the area in which you would be responsible better. And I look forward to, to working with you and helping you get where you need to go.
Thank you.
I haven't been shy about your, your work in holding people accountable and I want you to feel comfortable now that you, you got the support of this council in whatever you do. I know that you got the support of the mayor, confidence of the mayor, but resource wise, if you see something.
And I know that where you are with his relates to your awareness of what needs to happen to even make this city in the area in which you would be responsible better. And I look forward to working with you and helping you get where you need to go.
Thank you.
I haven't been shy about your work in holding people accountable, and I want you to feel comfortable now that you got the support of this council in whatever you do. I know that you got the support of the mayor, confidence of the mayor. But resource-wise, if you see something that you need, let this council know, don't be hesitant. If we can help you, we want to help you.
I've got a list right here.
You got a list?
They always keep a list, don't ask that question.
Let's submit them through the proper channels, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
All right, Councilman Green?
Gary, did you get that deal to clean the ditches out? Is that on your list?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
To expand on my comments, two motions will be necessary, one to add it to the agenda and the other to suspend the rules.
I'll add it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Norman again, appreciate you.
Thank you. I just want you to know, I do appreciate the consideration. I thank the C.A.O. and the mayor for putting me up for the position and y'all's consideration for it. And I want you to know, it's a good opportunity for me, but I also see it more as an awesome responsibility, you know, and I take my job very seriously, and we're going to work very hard within the resources we've got, and I think it's going to take all of us working together to get where we want to get.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Ms. Jones, any other business, ma'am?
None at this time.
At this time, okay.
That's it.
All right. Anyone have anything relative to property standards? Anything for Mr. Harris for property standards? Thank you. And we got what we needed. We got what we needed from Ms. Jones, we got what we needed from Ms. Creel on bond forfeitures. Ms. Jones, is there any legislation to be added for tomorrow?
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry?
We have one that we inadvertently left off the agenda.
Okay.
It's a resolution to recognize Corporal LeBryan Morstan and his canine Casper for their efforts in capturing a suspect wanted for the murder of a Texas Deputy Sheriff. So Ms. Fuller will be asking you to allow her to put that on the agenda and to recognize him tomorrow.
All right. And we have the final request to speak.
Mr. John Settle.
John Settle for Tillwood. I just wanted to commend Councilman Flurry. Saturday, while I was sitting at home, it was a rough cold day and weather was bad. He was out there as an auxiliary police officer, served a six-hour shift, I believe, and I think it's a good thing that we have the auxiliary police and especially a council member, but that they serve a real good purpose. I asked my friend if he would help with security to help me get out of here today, because I am an alumni, and he said, "John, you're not that kind of friend." So I'm going to ask Chief Raymond or somebody to help me get to my car tonight when I leave this meeting, but I think it's great we have the auxiliary police, and I'm going to try to write something about them.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Butcher?
Isn't there something in the bylaws that you can't wear a hat up there at that podium?
Well, y'all haven't enforced that consistently, though, you know? It's kind of like the three-minute rule.
It's a new year. It's a new year.
Yeah, that's right. So there's a media exception. And that...
Martin Richard, he's got a hat on.
Rest ward.
Mr. Bill Weiner.
Bill Weiner, number two, Longleaf Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. I just wanted, no, I'm not using that. No, that tomorrow. I find a little problem with your procedures. Tomorrow's meeting is the main meeting, you have the speakers like me come up and talk, but then later in the meeting, you have a subject that they want to talk about, but they have to talk about it before they hear it. That's kind of backwards, and I want to ask you to reconsider maybe moving or letting the public speak after a presentation is made, because they can't really speak before they hear it. That's basically what I wanted to mention. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Mr. Kingcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Chairman, everyone on the city council, Ken Craft, 157 Archer Avenue. John, you know, a good anagram for Clemson is C lemons. Anyway, my wife is so proud, and I am more proud, that today is 1,000 days since her last cigarette, April 18th of 17, and flowers for the lovely girl. Saved us over $11,000. Want to thank Chief Scott Wolverton this morning for sharing the unfunded needs, glad to hear he and probably Chief Ben Raymond, a financing package. We've got to get those capital needs, those refits and those 10 pumpers and the police cruisers. We've got to do something. The voters didn't say grace in November, and we've got to move forward with something. 11/19/19, Tuesday morning, got on I-49, headed to Civil Law Training Institute for the Health Board on which I sit, and at 8:05, I was getting onto I-49, and I realized in my little quirky eye-brain that I would be at mile marker 186 at 8:16, and the odometer would be on 186. And on the radio on keel was Dr. Jeffrey Sato talking about the $186 million bond issue, and this is on the Gettysburg Address anniversary, which is 1863, which is 186, repropositions. I'm sure everybody thinks like that, right? And the woman, we all know some things and we don't know others, and it's kind of like the thought for the day, day for yesterday, this French author, Marguerite Eusénard, "N'est-ce que, je ne sais pas, c'est que, je ne sais pas." I know that I don't know what I don't know, but we also, the opposite of that is true, the antithesis. We do know what we know, and I know the mayor sometimes must feel like Macbeth in his castle, and it must feel like the beginning of Scene Five of Act Five, when the EPA, which is Malcolm, and the DOJ, which is Macduff, are attacking the castle, you know, and he must feel troubled, but we've got to move on. And this EPA consent decree is really the biggest challenge, I think, ahead, and I think, just like the mayor requested, and so did Mayor Glover, we really need a point person, preferably an engineer, to handle all things EPA consent decree related. Two quick meetings, Complete Count Committee meets, second floor, Thursday, January 30th, the U.S. Census Bureau, public and media invited, free, mayor's conference room. Brommore Neighborhood Association invites members to meet our new Commissioner, Jim Teleferro, District Eight, this Thursday, 6:00 P.M., Presbyterian Church, Jim. Thank you so much. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Kref. Mr. Chairman, those are all the requests to speak.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the mayor, he was brought to his attention about Mr. Kref's wife's achievement, and he asked me to present this letter to you to give to your wife.
She'll like this one, not as much as the flowers.
There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction to be adopted. Ms. Jones, can you proceed with regular agenda legislation, please?
Resolution 172, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the City of Shreveport and WIVI Land Development LLC, here and after, called owner, for the sanitary sewer, lift station, force main, and related facilities to serve Lucian Field Estates. Resolution 1, recognizing the 70th anniversary of Booker T. Washington High School. Resolution 2, a resolution whereby the mayor is making recommendation to the city council for its approval regarding the amount and type of various insurance premiums, and to authorize the mayor to execute a payment for those, for the purpose of binding insurance. Resolution 3, a resolution to establish a charter review committee.
Councilman Butcher?
On Resolution, let's see, oh, I'm sorry, that's next, I'm sorry. Disregard, disregard.
All right. Ms. Jones?
Resolution 4, authorizing a request to be made to Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving the property located in District D and described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the City of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution. Resolution 5 is approving Tomac Glass Partners for participation in the industrial tax exemption program located at 2940 West Spurkunz Industrial Loop, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. Resolution 6, authorizing the mayor to execute a binding memorandum of understanding between the City of Shreveport and Gateway, Louisiana, LLC.
All right. Tony Creel?
Yes, sir. With regard to Resolution 6, I'm going to ask the members of the council to refrain from commenting as the city has been served with a petition with regard to that matter on the agenda.
All right. Councilman Flurry?
Ms. Creel, were we named individually as plaintiff, I mean defendant?
Individually as council members? No, sir. No, sir. It is the City of Shreveport, along with Gateway Development, was named as defendants.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'm supportive of Tomac Glass Partners' ITEP exemption application, but I have requested that our staff study the possibility of our implementing procedures and standards that we can consistently apply in considering these tax exemption applications. I understand from my staff that we don't have standards in place presently, and I think, given the fact that Governor Edwards has charged this body and other local bodies with reviewing those applications, we need to make sure that we do that in a consistent and objective way, and so I will present that legislation for the council's consideration at a later date. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Butcher?
On Resolution 4, I'm assuming that these are minerals for streets? Is that right, the way it reads?
Let's see, Resolution 4, that was prepared by legal. This is for oil and gas.
Leases in District D, those are for like, streets that we own the minerals to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And are we going to put those out for bid? Is that how that works?
Yes, it's just like, if you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we had Mr. Hathorn. It's the same thing. We received a similar request for another area of land that the city owns, and what this legislation would do would allow for us to present the resolution to the State Mineral Board to put it out for bid.
Got you. Okay. Just want some clarification, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilman Bravon?
Mr. Chairman, my comments was in reference to Resolution 6, but I'm going to ask the city attorney, because I think the lawsuit is a bunch of malarkey, and it does not reference the resolution. And I met with the city attorney, the clerk of the council, attorney... Danielle, four times. And that's not even including text messages and phone calls, because we want to be very careful in how this resolution was worded, to not obligate the city in any way, but rather to ask the mayor to go into a good-faith effort negotiating the possibilities of something happening. And city attorney, I don't understand, if the lawsuit is not even referencing the actual resolution, you feel that we should not comment on it because of the lawsuit? Is that, do you understand that?
Yes, sir. The petition does reference the resolution. Now, I don't think it references the current resolution that is currently posted, but again, it is all still subject to litigation that I was served with today, and I would ask that all members of council refrain from discussing it.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to concur with the city attorney in this effort, but I will be writing an article, because I'm sick and tired of situations where we can move this city forward, we get resistance. If you, I mean, listen, I don't know where this legislation would go. I have no idea where this legislation would go. But all I know is that in the city of Shreveport, we have not had a crane downtown Shreveport putting up any major projects. The unemployment rate in Shreveport is in double figures. The poverty rate is close to 60 percent. And yet, we don't seem open to the possibility or the aggressive approach of anybody who's willing to bring economic development in the city. And that's why we are where we are now. I, you have too. You've gotten emails, you've gotten text messages from a bunch of people opposing even, there's nothing in this resolution that say we're going to give away anything. We not going to give away no property, we're not going to give away no resources, no money. All this say is that we're going to a good-faith, instruct the mayor to go into a good-faith conversation. Now, all I'm saying is that all of this resistance that we've been getting, nobody is offering an alternative to how we going to create a stimulus of economic growth in Shreveport. There's none. This city has been abandoned by those entities that was put in place to help generate research and initiate economic development. I've been sitting on this council for four years, now five years, and not one crane has appeared in Shreveport. No major development, high unemployment, high poverty, 60 percent black, poor city, and yet there's nobody coming forth saying, "We want to help this city." Somebody come along and say, "We want to try to help this city," and then we get resistance because everything that has been said and emailed to us is malarkey, is misguided. I got an email the other day saying, "Will it, will it, will it ever run for mayor?" The same type of crap that creates a misguided perception in this city about where we are as a city. And I tell you, and I've said it time and time again, that we see things not as they are, we see things as we are. I see this city from where I think is a reality, because I'm using the Alice Report, I'm using the reality that there is no economic development in this city, crime is high, shootings every night, islandness. Some of you see the city from Southern Loop perspective, some of us see it from other perspective, but I'm telling you, in the inner city of Shreveport, we are in dire need of economic development. I'm going to challenge this council, because we can't wait for the next council, that we start thinking out of the box, that we start seeing this city like the city really is, that is a majority-black city, that's poor, and unemployment and poverty is high, and we need to put together a plan to help solve that and address that. We can't be divided in this anymore. It's not going back. We're not going to make Shreveport great again by trying to hold on to what is not. We're not going to do that. This council, I will challenge you. This may not be the thing, the one, but we cannot put up resistance in opposition to anything and everything that may seem to be progressive in this city. I sent to some of the people who email me, I sent them a scripture, and I said, "Why should we sit here till we die? This may not be it, but why..." And the reference of that scripture says that four leopards were sitting outside the gate, starving, and they said to one another, "Why sit here? If we sit here, we're going to die. If we go inside the gate, we may die." But in everything, there's risks, there's risks. But the reason I put that scripture in there, because once they went inside the gate to find... find food and find a degree of comfort, the fear, the fear that they had to go inside the gate was not there. It was the fear of the unknown. Somebody once said that the only thing we have to fear is fear itself. And I keep hearing from a sector of Shreveport is, "We can't do this, we got to wait." And Martin Luther King wrote a letter from the Birmingham jail stating his interaction with the power structure, the elected officials of Birmingham, when they told him, "King, this is not the time. Let's wait. Just wait. Everything is going to get better, and we're going to wait. Everything, the unemployment is going to get better, the conditions of this city is going to get better, but this ain't the time to worry about that." And King said, "Anytime you hear people saying, 'Wait,' it usually mean never. We ain't going to never do this." And I'm telling you, you won't, not now, not tomorrow, five or 10 years from now, you're going to have a city, and it has been expressed by the United Way, by several of those who have been for this body, and expressed that if the trend of this city continues, and if we don't think outside the box, and if this council and this mayor does not take the responsibility of recruiting and not leaving no stone unturned to try to seek development and empowerment in businesses, to address this poverty and unemployment, 10 years from now, we're not going to recognize this city. I could see right now, move coming like Baton Rouge, St. George, we want to disannex. We want to disannex Southern Loop. I could see it coming. I could see it coming right now, and we're going to leave these poor black folks in the inner city of Shreveport to fend for themselves, because nobody is trying to bring economic development within Shreveport, Louisiana. And I'm going, as long as I'm on the council, and it's no secret that I will not serve out my four years. There's no... I have not kept that a secret. I don't know when, but I will not serve out my four years, but the time that I'm here, I'm going to continue to fight for those that are less fortunate, those that are looked on as outcasts, those that are not a part of the mainstream, those that are impoverished and those unemployed. That has been my issue from day one on this council. But the challenge of the rest of this council has got to be, are we willing to throw everything that coming for us in the trash can and wait? And I want to remind you, oftentimes, wait mean never. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselman Brafler. Nobody else? If there are no other comments, then Ms. Jones, do proceed.
Ordinance number one, amending Article V annexations of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances relative to the annexation of property. Ordinance two, amending various articles and sections in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code.
No comments?
I was just looking over this, didn't see it earlier. The annexation deal, what does this pertaining to?
Ordinance number one is to get the Code of Ordinances in line with the UDC.
With UDC? So basically having the MPC approve the annexations before they come to us, right?
Before they come to the council.
That's it?
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Ms. Jones, ordinance in second pass, I'm sorry.
Ordinance 161 is amending Chapter 10, Article 4, Division 2, Section 10-175 of the Code of Ordinances regarding hours of operation for retail dealer of alcohol non-downtown zoning districts. Ordinance 189, closing and abandoning an alley in the Coatsers subdivision of Tal 20, Shreveport, in Section 37. Ordinance 190 is amending Chapter 78, Section 123 of the Code of Ordinances concerning facilities servitude over city-owned property. Ordinance 191 is amending various articles and sections of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Development Code. Ordinance 192 is amending various articles and sections of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code. Ordinance 193, zoning case number 19-441C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code, rezoning property located on the east corner of Pickett Street and Fairfield Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from RUC Urban Core Residential District to C3 General Commercial District. Ordinance 194, zoning case number 19-443C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code, rezoning property located on the southeast corner of Carroll Street and Yuri Drive, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R17 Single Family Residential District to C2 Corridor Commercial District. Ordinance 195, zoning case number 19-444C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport, UDC, rezoning property located on the north side of Burcoons Industrial Loop, approximately 925 feet east of Kingston Road intersection, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C2 Corridor Commercial District to C4 Heavy Commercial District.
Chairman.
Counselman Nixon.
Mr. Chairman, ordinance 161, if adopted, will require liquor stores to remain closed between 12:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m., seven days a week. That is not as significant a change as I initially proposed, but it is one that I believe has the support of the majority of the council, and no members of industry have expressed opposition either, so I'm hopeful that we can move forward with that legislation and adopt it tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Counselman Green.
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, Counselman Nicholson on 161...
Yes, sir.
...with everything and with a fair playing field, would you be in agreement that the liquor store, Bernie Woods, you know, black liquor store, would it go back to the MPC so that they would look at it again, so that everybody would be on a playing field versus these would be playing on a level playing field, but his store would still be like we normally handle stores like what he is? So would there be an objection if we would ask them to reconsider his application, and since we're at this point in that, we would put everybody on a playing, level field?
Counselman McGreen, as I've expressed to you and to the entire council, if the decision were mine alone, I would require liquor stores to close at 9:00 p.m. citywide. I think that's an appropriate balance between convenience and public safety, but despite my best efforts, I have been unable to convince the majority of the council to join me in that legislation. The 9:00 p.m. close time for the liquor store you're referencing was a condition of the issuance of a special use permit, which was required because the owner wanted to put a store on a residence that, or on property that immediately abuts a private residence. I think that's an appropriate restriction, and I will say for the record that I will support that same restriction on any liquor store that comes before the council that abuts residential property. And should the council or a majority of the members decide between now and tomorrow that they would like to support me in closing liquor stores at 9:00 p.m. citywide, I'm still willing to do that, because I do think we should be fair to everybody.
Right. No, I'm not saying close them all. I'm just saying that normally, and here again, we just had the human relations person up, and we were talking about race relationship. Normally, when it's something black, we normally have certain restrictions and certain whatever, and I just think that since we're doing this, that the day ought to pass, that everybody ought to be on the same level path. I'm not saying close them at night. Here again, once you close them at whatever this time is, what will it accomplish? It's not... And I gave you my word that I was going to vote for it, so I'm going to vote for it, but on other hands, you say we close the liquor stores, but you can still go to a restaurant, you still can go to a bar, get as drunk as you want. It's not like because we close this, drinking is going to stop. It's just that they can go to Bojor, go wherever else to get their stuff. So if, say for an instance, if we were saying, "You cannot go in a restaurant and drink after these times as well," then, you know, that would put everybody balanced, but just to say, "Y'all can't go buy this package of liquor at this particular time," and so then, therefore, all of whatever the eels of liquor is going to be zapped, that's not going to be true. I don't know if anything would happen after this, but like I say, I gave you my word that I would vote for it, but I don't see what is accomplishing. But also, as I said before, normally, and not just this council, and not just this city, but normally, when it has to do with a black establishment, we got to have a special something, and it's, I think it's time out for us to have anything special. I just want equal playing field for everybody versus if you go down Line Avenue, there's a liquor store right there at, I don't know which...
Tony's closes at 8:00, Counselman Green.
No, no, but I'm saying it's next to a resident. Closing at 8:00 is not going to stop folk from drinking. They still going to drink, they'll just get it somewhere else. They'll go to the restaurant, because if you go to the shopping center on Pyramid over at, right there, Pyramid's not superior, because they drink there all night and all day. They don't know police, don't know police even go down Line Avenue, because they know they can go there and drink. Then, before you get there, right in that shopping center, they go there and they drink all night and all day. Police don't even come on Line Avenue. So therefore, my question is, my question is, my question is, drinking is not going to stop, because like I say, if this, what I see is, if you putting something up, then we avoiding, like for an instance, you put a signal light to avoid an accident. So my question is, what, because over in my district, I got liquor store, they, in the morning, at 2:00, they be waiting for them to open, and that's still going to remain. All in my area, it's not going to help my area at all, my district at all. They be there day, they be there night, they be there whatever. In fact, they even got accounts set up that even if you don't have the money, you can go there and put it on the account, when your check come, then you pay it.
That's unfortunate.
So I don't know if it's unfortunate or not, but I'm just telling you the facts as to how it is. It's just real life. One day, I'd just like for you to go through my area and see what we're up again in my district, you know? Here again, these stores that we're talking about, they're in nice areas, they're nice whatever, and everybody's nice and everything is cool. I would like to just show you some real life that this deal right here won't even come close to even identifying with. This is going to be some nice legislation, but if you come and go with me to my district, I can show you some real life. I can show you some stores where this will not even be a drop in a pail. So to me, this is making it real nice and real cool, but it's not helping the situation as I've said before. If the water is poisoned, putting roses around it is not going to make it clean. So therefore, in my district, if you come go with me and I can show you before you do this legisla... If you could help my district, I mean, I'm good, and the entire city, but I'm just saying that this is real nice legislation. I'm a man of my word, I'm going to support it, but as far as the eels and the problems that we have in our community, and, Ms. Chairman, you can tell if it's in my district, it's in your district, I mean, we got serious issues. This is going to be nice, but it's not going to help the blood in the dust. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Counselman Brafler.
Two things, Mr. Chairman. The first one is that I will not support the amendment of 161 for this reason. There was, the change was not initiated because of an issue that we felt was dangerous or advantageous to the city. It was initiated because it was felt that we should close our liquor stores at 9:00 o'clock, and if the... If the Baton Rouge, St. George's vote in November is to prevail, then Shreveport is going to be the second largest city in Louisiana. And I don't see us going back to the days where all the liquor sales was in Bojor after a certain time and on Sundays. But I especially became compelled to not support it after the last meeting coming up to the holidays. It was postponed for no other reason than to allow liquor sales to exist through New And my position is, if we are that conscientious of postponing an ordinance to allow business to exist through the holidays, why would we be so prone to not allow business to exist during the hours that they not exist and prohibit them and allow the sales to go somewhere else? I think that's a little inconsistency in how we govern in that aspect. But I want to speak on, and I need to ask Mr. Clark, now, 191... Wait a minute, let me make sure I got this right. 193, Mr. Clark. It was remanded back to you. It was not? Yeah, come in and tell me, what did we do? Because I'm, because we had a lot of discussion regarding this in our previous meeting. Give me the update on this legislation.
This gentleman had two applications. This is the second application that was presented to the MPC board. You remanded the first application back to the MPC board, which will be coming back to you.
Okay, this is not the one?
No, sir.
Okay. And the difference in the two was what?
There's really no difference. The reality of the situation is, the gentleman has no desire for a recommendation to come from the MPC board or the city council to enact on anything than what he's applied for, and that's the C3 zoning, and he's already served us with legal actions concerning the previous, and he didn't even attend the hearing to, hear the discussion on the previous application that was remanded back.
Now, it was after the meeting. I don't know if you recall, in the meeting, I asked the gentleman, "Did he own that property?" And he said he did.
Yes, sir.
And I found out that that wasn't the case. Is that true? What can you tell me about the ownership of that property?
We found that some of the property is owned by him and...
It is owned by him?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Clark.
All right, Counselman Butcher.
Back to the liquor store issue, I will say this, just for the record, that my problem with the liquor store at Kings and Gilbert was based solely upon that we were going from a C2 to a C3, and that it abutted a residential neighborhood. The way that I see it is pretty simple. Any of us who live in a house, buying a house, knowing that the liquor store is there, similar to the ones on Yuri Drive, around Yuri and Kings Highway, when those people bought those properties all these years ago, they knew that the liquor store was there. I live very close to a commercial building, in fact, it's in my backyard. I bought... I bought the house knowing that the commercial building was there. I didn't realize that at seven thirty on Saturday morning, they would be emptying their dumpster and waking me up every Saturday morning, but I knew it when I bought the property that I was subject to that. I will say this, and I will make this, this promise to you, Councilman Green and Councilman Bradford, that I do see your districts. I, I do forty appraisals a month from Southern Trace to MLK to Carl Terrace. I go all around the city, and I see what goes on in your districts. I will make this promise to y'all that as long as I'm on this council and we have a zoning issue that comes up, that is a alcohol-related business that will be selling hard liquor, I will make this promise, if it abuts to an R one, I'm voting no. Or I would put the same exact restrictions that we put on Mr. Woods. I feel like that the restrictions we put on Mr. Woods is not due to his color. I feel like that it's due to the nature of the business, the through traffic that would be coming through there and the citizens that abut that property. And when I say abut, I'm talking about my fence would be here, the liquor store is there. So I, I will make this promise to you, it has absolutely nothing to do with color. I, I, I wouldn't, if Thrifty Liquor wanted to open up one that abutted an R one, I'm gonna be a no vote. So, and I hate to put Thrifty on the spot like that, but if any other liquor store, let's say ABC Liquor comes in here and decides to open up, I would be, I would be a no vote regardless, because I feel like that the, the people bought that house knowing that it was C two, they didn't anticipate it being C three. It's much like the rock crushing that we, we dealt with over Midway. A lot of those people didn't.
I tried to stop that too, Councilman.
A lot of those people didn't necessarily understand what was going on there. But I, I just feel like that us changing zoning, we need to be very sensitive to the residents that live close to it. So I'll make that vow to y'all that I, I don't care if it's in, in, you know, Country Club, MLK, Southern Trace, Long Lake. I'm still gonna vote that way if, if we have a packaged liquor stores on high content liquor abutting to a, to a neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Councilman Bradford. How are you? Councilman Green?
Mr. Chair, and I understand exactly what you say, but as I've said before, when the cow gets out the gate, it's too late to close it then.
I agree with you to a certain extent.
My, my question, what I was thinking that when Councilman Nicholson was putting this together, that it was going to assist in my district as well, not just for, like for an instance, there are some stores in my district that this will not apply to them. They still will be able to stay open as long as they want to, because they, they're not a liquor store, they're a grocery store. They're grocery stores who sell the same thing. So therefore, you know, the liquor store, I don't have any. I got grocery stores that sell liquor. So therefore, this doesn't apply to them. They can still just go right on business just like it been all the time. But over here, there will be a difference, you know, you won't have that traffic, you won't have that whatever. But I can take you through my district right now, and the traffic is there from can't see in the morning to can't see at night. But this doesn't help. I was under the impression that whatever legislation was gonna come was gonna help my district and help districts like mine, but this doesn't help it. And so therefore, uh, yes, sir.
Well, I just, I had a question. I, so, so you actually have, and this goes all the way back to this fiscal separation issue that we haven't been talking about. You actually have grocery stores in your district that are selling hard liquor?
Every one of them.
See, store, they call them convenience stores.
Convenience stores, every one of them.
They're not supposed to be, is that, Chief, is that?
Yeah, not if they're selling gasoline, some other products, I have to look at individual stores.
I think they were grandfathered.
Oh, they were grandfathered in back, okay.
Chief, they said, he said my grandfather got them in, what'd you say? Chief, come up a minute, come up a minute, they said something about my grandfather, I don't know what I said.
And Chief, Chief, I'm not, I, I just, I wanna understand it, 'cause, 'cause I agree with, with Councilman Green one hundred percent. I didn't realize that there were these small stores in your neighborhoods that were actually still selling liquor, but if they were grandfathered in, then I guess they are.
We, we generally grandfather in any legislation in that doesn't affect a business that operated under particular pretenses up to that day it passed, so.
But they would actually have to have owned that business for, 'cause this law changed.
It would have to be the same ownership, that would be, or at least the same license, have to be the same license.
No, none of the, none of the stores in my district are owned by the owner before. What happened is, what happened is, these folk come in my district, they have suitcases of money and they buy it outright, and everybody goes and living to the sunset, and that's just how it's been, sir.
I, I think we probably need to do some research on this, my recollection is, and it could be wrong, is that if they don't go out of business.
Right, then they still remain under the same license. So in my district, you got stores that was owned by whoever, and I'm not calling any names, 'cause that would be right. But all they do is they just bring a suitcase of money, and they go under the same deal and they stay open, and they sell whatever they want to, as long as they want to.
Mr. Chairman. All right, Councilman Lewis?
Councilman Green, I have to say, I appreciate your call and my attention. I didn't know that there were stores like the ones you're describing in your district.
Yes, sir. And here again, I apologize for not, I was under the impression that, that you knew.
Well, I, I think what we should do is, you know, my legislation modifies an existing law that concerns when stores that sell as their primary commodity, alcohol, can stay open. But I would be delighted to work, you know, legislation that deals with the stores you're talking about. Because, you know, as I've said before, some of the ills from late-night liquor sales really are not born primarily by my district. I, I, my sense is that they are born for the reasons you've described, largely by your district and the two other members, or three other members. I want to, look, I just, my sense is that there was a time when, uh, when the composition of the council was different and, and business owners came to the council and they wanted to do things in, in Pastor Green's district that were not in the people's interest, but they were good for the business owners, liquor stores and others. And I just want, I want every member to know that I'm always gonna pick the people, your people, your constituents, over business owners who are selling hard liquor. So I would love to work with you on additional regulations that will prevent things like people selling liquor all hours of night and, and businesses extending credit to people who don't have their paychecks and they're still lined up to get liquor in the middle of the night. I just think that's, that's harmful, and I'd like to minimize that behavior for Ken. So I appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford? I was, I wanted to ask, Mr.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Thompson, this, back in the day, we had what is called blue laws. And then we, this, not this council, but the council back in whatever year demolished blue laws. And that meant that businesses, there used to be a time when you couldn't open on Sunday, that everything was closed on Sunday. But then that was during the process of blue laws. So is this anything connected to how the blue laws, this legislation?
Uh, I'm sure this, these establishments would have been affected by the blue laws when they were in existence. But I think that the reason that they continue to exist is that the councils felt that it would be a taking if you, if you prevented them from, from operating the way that they did originally.
When they bought the business.
Yeah, and then the, the city would have to compensate them for that taking. That's my recollection of the discussion that went on when all of this was discussed.
Yes, it's like, Councilman, so that you'll know, just, in the stores as in my district, there's no separation of the meat counter, the liquor store, the food, the whatever. Everything is just right, you just go in the store and you just buy whatever you want. And that's how, and they just open however they want to and they close when they get ready. And that's just how it is. So when I was talking to you about this, I was thinking, and, and, and I apologize for me not getting a good understanding, that this was going to assist in the district that I serve, that it wouldn't just be so open market. So that, that was my, my thinking, but let that be as it is.
Uh, councilmembers from way back from Hillary Huckabee on have looked at this issue, but it hasn't been resolved.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, Councilman Bradford, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanna be clear that in nineteen ninety-one, we, we created the Queensborough Neighborhood Association, and I became the president. And for the last thirty, well, not actually, twenty-nine years, there has not been a new liquor store, a new liquor outlet in Queensborough. I am not pro liquor. There has not been a new liquor outlet, a new liquor store, put in my district since I've been elected to the Shreveport City Council, not one. I've, I've been compromised, I've tried to be compromised to allow, to support liquor stores. Now, I'm going back to this, unfortunately, I'm going back to this, what Councilman Green said. There's only one liquor store in Shreveport, Louisiana that is owned by an African-American, and that's Lake Shore Liquor, that's owned by Barney Woods. It's the only, you look at all the liquor stores in my neighborhood that was there when I got there, in my district that was there when I got there, no new liquor store has been put in my district or in my neighborhood in thirty years. The only time I supported a liquor store was when I supported Barney Woods. And I supported Barney Woods for this reason, and, and you heard this before. On my first four years on the council, there was three applications for liquor stores to be put in neighborhoods, and all of them happened to be black neighborhoods. And the council supported those liquor stores in opposition of the, of the, of the council person from that district. Is that right, Jerry? And, and in spite of the strong opposition from those residents, the previous council approved the application of liquor stores being put in those neighborhoods. But when Barney Woods put in the application, those same council members opposed that liquor store. And I said it was, it was hypocrisy. You, you allow liquor store be put in, 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 in black neighborhoods, but you wouldn't support a liquor store being put on Kings Highway in Gilbert. And I asked the question, was that because Barney Woods was a black man? And that's why I supported it. And as soon as it passed, here come lawsuits, which have tied this man up in court for over two and a half years. Because again, the message is, you know, we, we gonna, we gonna, we gonna make you spend money, we gonna do what we wanna do to make sure you don't, you don't prevail. So I hate to say, which again, I, I, I work in a very diverse environment. I say, I can't be one person on my day job, because I, I have, I have subordinates that are black and white, and I, and I, and I have to apply myself as very fair and do what's right for everybody. But the attitude of those that paraded down here and kept us here to eight o'clock that night, making a case on why Barney Woods should not have a liquor store, I voted along a racial line, because I said, let's, let, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. That's the, that's the position that I don't wanna see us go. I don't wanna see us go. That's, that's why I wanna challenge this council. Let's, let's, let's try to do away with the race factor. We can't, we can't do away with it all the time. But this body's gotta show this city that we can, we can, we can move in a direction that is growth and prosperity and progressive for this city in a unified way and not let everything be perceived as going down racial lines. But we gotta be consistent, we gotta be consistent. And, and I still wanna see Barney Woods open his business, even though it's still, it's still a litigation, and I think it gonna, it gonna make him spend as much money they can make him spend. But I'm like Councilman Green. Now, once he prevails and he opens his store, then I am gonna see whatever we can do to revisit his closing hours. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Green, uh, Councilman.
I, 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 yeah, go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I just, I wanna conclude my remarks this afternoon on this issue with, with this commitment to Councilman Bradford and Councilman Green. I can't answer for the actions of past members of the council. But so long as I'm a member of the council, I am never going to support a liquor store in one of your districts of the opposition of your constituents. It won't happen. So if in the past, that has been a problem, it's not gonna be with me. Okay, so let's, I hope that we, we will not again, on future liquor store applications, have to have a conversation like this one, because I'm not going to do anything other than what I think is best for the constituents of your district, just like I have for the constituents of mine. Thank you.
You, Councilman, I appreciate that, and, and that, and you're a man of your word, and I feel comfortable in you agreeing and doing what you just mentioned. But I want, not limited to liquor stores. My, my, my position in this council and challenging us is, is regardless of the issue, let's, let's look beyond race and let's try to do what's right. That's, that's what I'm asking, okay? And that's what we got to do in the next three years. That's, thank you.
I, I agree with you, and I will say that I, I have never and I will never take or refrain from taking any action based on the color of anybody's skin.
Thank you, sir.
We'll do that.
Councilman Green?
Yes, sir. Like I said, with the store that Barney Woods is opening up, we got it so fixed that it can't even look like a liquor store. They wanting to do something to the sidewalk, they wanting to do all kind. It has to be complete, there would not be another liquor store in this city and a lot of other cities that look like his, 'cause it can't even look like that. But as I said, again, Councilman Nicholson, I, I appreciate what you're saying. And at this point in time, I'm sure that there will not be another liquor store opening in my district. But when you and I were talking in the back and, and I was telling you about my district and whatever, I was thinking that this particular legislation that you were talking about would reflect what was happening. They got big signs up there that say liquor store, but they also sell groceries and they sell whatever else they wanna sell. So this would be nice legislation for you all's district. But my district, like normal, will remain the same. And I understand the problem, that as long as whatever, that won't happen. But I was thinking that this legislation would bring me some help. And as you said, Councilman Butch, you go through the whole city. So I don't know if you knew what I just said, but it's there, it's plain day. All you gotta do is just go in the store, and it's just right there. So whereas one area will be nice and pretty and everything look nice, then this won't help me, this won't help us, this just there. And it, it just don't make you, it doesn't make you have a good feeling. You know, it still make you feel like unequal, and that's just not a good feeling. But I appreciate the nice kind words, you know, that, that's nice, you know, nice is just nice, but it, it doesn't do anything, nice just nice. You know, it doesn't cook for you, it doesn't do anything, it just, it isn't nice. So, so I just leave here having the nice comments, but the legislation will not reflect it. Now, what would make me feel wonderfully nice is that we would postpone this and we would do a committee like we always do, the Public Safety Committee, and say, well, how can we help the other district with some legislation? Then that would make me feel wonderfully nice, you know. Then that would make me feel wonderfully nice, you know, as to, okay, so now that we know, knowledge is power, now that we know what's going on in District Galton, District whatever, and since we got an opportunity to do this legislation, then why not just say, we'll give it to the Public Safety Committee again, and as we held off until the folk made their money for Christmas and New Years, then let's just see if we could help the rest of the city out, so we'll all be on the equal plane. Then that would make me feel wonderful and nice. Councilman Nicholson, you, you still listening there?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, I just wanna throw that out parenthetically. So, y'all sleep on this tonight, and if y'all could just, you know, take it to the Public Safety Committee, you know, uh, I wouldn't wanna table it, because anything table dies, but you, you all have done a brilliant job with the Public Safety, and I just think that we could come out with some real nice, nice, nice stuff. Thank you.
Well, don't table it, just use a nice, real nice, nice, nice word and postpone it.
Yeah.
And, 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 and go from there. That's a nice way of putting it, because the way this states is primary, the primary commodity sold is alcohol, okay? So, the stores that you have and that I have in my district also, uh, sell other things too, like you just stated. So who's to determine what the primary commodity is?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I should say, that language comes from the existing ordinance, that's not language that I crafted for this legislation. Look, this was postponed at Councilman Green's request last month. I would refer that we have an upper down vote in this legislation, and if it fails, uh, that's fine, uh, but, um, I just, I think this has been on the agenda long enough.
My only problem is, uh, I, one is I believe in consistency, and I was raised up by my grandparents, and she said, your word is your bond. I've given you my word, but as I said, I was thinking it was gonna come out different, so I gotta vote for it, so, because of my word. So that's basically where I am, I'm tied into it because of my word, but my expression is out of frustration that it's not helping the whole city, it's helping a portion, and that's basically it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you ain't say when you go vote on it, you just said you will vote on it, so it don't have to be tomorrow. So let me say that, and I'm, I'm saying it, 'cause I'm still against it, and I'm go, I'm, 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 I'll go with Councilman Bradford on that, I just, I can't close certain stores down in the communities, 'cause they are making, I used to have mom and pop stores in my community, and they sell alcohol. I'm not saying it's, I still don't know who can count and say what's the primary commodity of what they're selling in their stores, so I, I'm in limbo, and I, I, I would keep selling stuff, because I don't know, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman?
Could, could an amendment be offered that if it's over a certain percentage of alcohol, is that, is that too?
I think that, that would be cumbersome to enforce, and I certainly hear the chief's view on that, but I don't know how the police chief or his officers would decide whether somebody was selling a particular percentage of alcohol.
I, I mean, I'll be honest, you know, I, I, I just, I understand where everybody's coming from on both sides. Uh, I, as well, had given, uh, Councilman Nicholson my word that I would vote for this, uh, because I do understand where he's coming from on the restrictions on the time, um, but I also see, and now that Councilman Green has brought this up, that there are some issues that maybe we need to look into. Uh, Chief, I was gonna ask you, you think maybe tomorrow that Cisco might be here?
Yeah, we can bring started Cisco, and I, I believe the way that we generally enforce it is based on the license that is issued. You know, for example, a Class A retail permit means that you sell more food than alcohol, so our enforcement will be upon the permit that you issued, and I would assume, and hate to assume things, that that's, that's proven through tax records, that the, the, the majority of your income is coming from the sale of food versus the sale of liquor or alcohol, that you'd have to prove that on an annual basis. But from an enforcement perspective, we're gonna go based on which retail license is.
Good, thank you.
And actually, Chief, since nobody from the city is in there, when you, uh, give your receipts and whatever, you can actually give them whatever you wanna give them, and they don't have any other recourse as to is it true or false, they just, it's basically taking their word.
Yeah, certainly, people rely on taxes, I'm sure.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chief. And Councilman Butch, you've made me feel a whole lot better.
I hope you feel really, really, really good.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
Any, no, no, there's no other table agenda, am I correct on that?
I'm not aware of any matter to be removed from the table.
Okay. We have no property standards or ABO appeals today?
We have no appeals.
All right. Uh, there, any reports from any boards or committees? Zero. A clerk's report, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, we just have some additional appointments by the mayor. They are on your agenda, if you want me to read them, I can, but they're there.
Oh, they'd be good. They'd be good. Someone from the library board was here. We had appointment for the library board. Oh, okay, I, I didn't wanna overlook you, I, I saw you sitting there, and I knew she was from somewhere, had to be.
There's somebody from the library.
An appointment for the library board, I believe.
Are they here?
She's right here.
Hi, my name's Brittany Turner, I live at 938 Boulevard Street in Shreveport, and, 71104.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and that's, that's for the library, Councilman Bradford? Yeah. Ms. Turner, how, how are you doing?
I'm well, thank you.
Isn't my understanding that at one point you worked for the library?
Yes, sir.
What, what was your, what was your task?
Uh, I was the records manager and special projects librarian, um, so I moved here from New York in November of 2012, because I got that position with the library, and I worked there for just under two years.
Okay, but you don't work for them now?
No, sir, no.
I usually ask this question, and I don't mean to offend you, I ask you this, uh, by seeking to be on the board, is there an agenda, hidden agenda that you have, or what, what is your, what is your reasoning for wanting to be on the board after, after working for the board?
Yes, sir, um, so I have a master's in public administration and policy, as well as a master's in library and information science. Um, when I left the work, the employee of the Shreve Memorial Library, I actually accepted a position as a school librarian with Cattle Parish School Boards, where I was for about four years. Um, now I'm in a different industry, I'm not working in libraries anymore, but I definitely am still engaged and interested in the profession, um, and definitely value the work that the Board of Control does as far as setting policy and, um, the fiduciary responsibilities of the library.
So you worked there for around two years?
Yes, sir.
How would you characterize your work record? Were there any disciplinary action that was taken against you?
No, sir.
No? So what do you feel you can offer the board as, as, as a board member?
I think, um, I'm relatively familiar with libraries, policies and procedures, um, which I know as far as the board is concerned would be one of the primary responsibilities. Um, I'm definitely also interested in ways that the library can become more accessible, um, to everyone in the community, um, embracing different technologies, some non-traditional, um, ways of providing library services.
And you was so, or you was nominated from a, I guess, a, a list of candidates, or you, how did?
Uh, I'm not sure how that process came about.
So you saw, you saw the opening, and you applied?
Yes, sir.
And then you, you was recommended?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you, thank you very much.
One question.
Councilman?
Uh, Ms. Turner, uh, hello. Were you ever reprimanded?
No, sir.
And how long did you say you worked there?
Uh, it was about two years, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Turner, I'll just say, you seem, uh, from my review, your resume and your remarks today to be exceptionally well qualified to serve on the library board, and I certainly appreciate your willingness to do so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, I think we have one, I think we have it, I thought I had some, saw somebody else out there, I guess, maybe they're, um, it's Ms. Lynch. That's why I'm looking for Ms. Lynch, I thought I saw Ms. Lynch out there, so, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, tomorrow we will be electing a chair and vice chair, a new vice chair and new chair, um, and we also have executive session tomorrow, am I correct? Okay. On one, two, three, on four different items, so. I don't need to state, do I need to state those? I don't need to state what they are, do I, okay? Okay. Councilman Bradford? Mr. Chairman, I haven't had any conversation regarding the new offices, well, I did once upon a time, but haven't had any lately. Okay. But I, I will say, I'm open, because a year ago, when the election of officer came up, Ms. Fuller said, the old procedure was adequate, and that we don't have to go by any previous, there's no rules, you know there's no rules, but there, there are some traditions that we went by. Right. And I'm saying, using Ms. Fuller's word, we don't have to do what we've been doing, because it may be adequate. Let's try to elect the best prepared, qualified, uh, officers. All right. Not saying that John and I did a bad job, but you just wanna make sure.
No, no, listen.
We did a good job, Mr. Chairman, that's right, that's right.
Now, listen, your, your, your continuation may be a positive thing, 'cause you, you directed us through here, okay?
Mr. Chairman, on that note, I'd just like to announce to the, uh, public, to the council, that I'm, uh, Mr. James Flores Campaign Manager, and, and all contributions, we'll have a website that you can make for the expense.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you can't politic on this council, on this, on this voice, you.
I'm sorry, don't put me in jail, Chief, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, strike that from the regular.
All right. Anything else?
Uh.
If there's not.